Good evening, everybody. Our February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting is now called to order. We have invocation by yours truly and then pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Nelson. A sand, invocation, and then pledge. Let us pray. Dear God, our Father, we thank you for this day, this opportunity that we are given. Let us not take it for granted as we know that there are some who were here on last week and are not here today. So, God, let us maximize every opportunity we have and use it for your glory. Now, as we begin to conduct the business of this city, we want to do it in a way that is orderly, that is decent, in a way that pleases you and serves our citizens well. Let us make sound decisions. Let us debate in an intelligent and appropriate manner. So, we give you the glory and praise now for your presence being with us. In your son Jesus' name we do ask. Amen.
Please join me in signing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All righty. Next item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes from our January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion that the minutes of January the twenty-third be adopted.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes from our January twenty-third meeting as they have been recorded. Counsel, you got any comments or questions about that particular motion? Any public comments or questions about that motion? All right. Seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next item is not actually on your agenda, but Mr. Jason DeWitt did reach out to us. He's running for representative, and we want to give him an opportunity to come to the microphone, state his first and last name, and just share what he has to share with us on the day. We do welcome you, Mr. DeWitt. We've met a couple of times before, but welcome you here to our council meeting on the day. So, again, state your first and last name, and then you can get into your remarks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to be here. It's Jason DeWitt. I'm from Boyce, Louisiana. I appreciate the council and all the folks that work so hard with the city to allow me just to speak for a minute. I'm running, I'm a candidate for District Twenty-five, which is a newly drawn district in this past legislative session. It's going to run from Woodworth, Louisiana, and Rappich Parish all the way to Powhatan, Louisiana, and Nakadish Parish. Basically, it's going to be on this side of the river all the way to the western end of the parish. I'm fifty-five years old. I have two kids, three grandkids, and one on the way, Mayor. It'll be another grandpa next month. I'm a graduate of Northwestern State University back in nineteen eighty-nine. I was a first responder and still work a little bit with the sheriff's office and the local fire department and continue that service, that public service. But I just want to let you know, Mayor, that if I am elected, I'm going to be an advocate for you folks down at the legislature to try to get some of that grant money that y'all have been so successful with here lately in those community block grants. So, I just want to let you know that. And if anyone wants to talk to me afterwards, I don't want to keep your meeting up, Mayor. I know y'all have got a big agenda, and I don't want to keep anything. But thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, Mr. DeWitt, I'm sorry. Just how far in Nakadish Parish do you come?
Come all the way to Powhatan.
Okay.
Yeah. Powhatan, Kane River, all the way to the western end, which would be Robleine, Provincetown, Gorm, down south to Caluchieville. Yes, yes, Mayor.
Well, look, we appreciate you being here today. Counsel, I don't know if you have any comments or questions.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody who wants to talk to Mr. DeWitt, you're going to stick around for a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks a lot, sir. All right. Next item on the agenda is proclamation number sixteen of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This computer is logging up, so leave it a little time, please. This is resolution number sixteen of two thousand twenty-three, which is a resolution, which is a resolution proclaiming Black History Month, the month of February. Whereas the history of our great country has been written by men and women of every race, religion, and ethnic background, and African-American History Month gives us the opportunity to recognize the extraordinary contributions African-Americans have made to the rich cultural history of our nation. And whereas, we also recognize the courage and tenacity of so many hard-working African-Americans whose legacies are woven into the fabric of our country. And whereas, we as a country must continue to encourage and demand our children to reach for the full measure of their potential and ambitions through education. And whereas, each February, we recognize African-American History Month to reflect upon how far we have come as a nation and community and what challenges remain. And whereas, each year, a national theme is chosen by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, the twenty-third national theme, the two thousand twenty-three national theme is Black Resistance, explores how African-Americans have addressed historic and ongoing disadvantage and oppression as evidenced by recent events. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Rodney Williams, Jr., Mayor of the City of Nakadish, hereby proclaim February twenty-third, February two thousand twenty-three as African-American History Month in the City of Nakadish and call upon all the citizens of Nakadish to honor and respect the significant contributions African-Americans have made to our great city and nation. Signed, Mayor Rodney Williams, Jr. And Mayor, I move for adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt this proclamation. Yeah, proclamation. So, Counsel, you got any comments or questions about this? I do, and in case you do, do have Mr. Johnny Barnes here, who I think we all know has certainly been somebody integral in the community, holding many community events, and we wanted to present this proclamation this year to Mr. Johnny Barnes, in part because of his community-minded initiatives that he has organized many times out of his own pocket. And so, we really, really appreciate that. And I also want Mr. Johnny to kind of inform us he has an event going on this week, so we want him to do that in just a moment as well. I know there are some others, Councilwoman at Large Smith, who have been planning along with our young lady. I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on her name right now. Maria Mangum, thank you so much. She has been really great, along with some of the council and some other community folks in organizing a Black History Parade and some other events. Okay, and that's going to be on February twenty-fifth, the parade and the other events around Black History. All right, Counsel, any questions or comments before we vote for this? And then I want to get Mr. Johnny up. Any public comments or questions on this proclamation?
Al, will Mr. Johnny speak?
All right. Well, we'll have him at this particular time, because then we're going to vote, and we're going to present him. Mr. Johnny will move on. So, if you got a comment now, Mr. Stacy, go ahead and come now.
Well, first, I need people to talk.
Well, yeah, we won't. We'll move on after he finishes. So, seeing no other comments, Counsel, roll call vote. Mrs. Stacy.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Johnny, state your first and last name, and then I want you to share what you got planned this week, okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Johnny Barnes, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and City officials from departments around the City of Nakadish. I've been doing this for twelve years since I moved to Nakadish, and what I've been doing is honoring people that I survey and look back at their history of what they have did and brought to the City of Nakadish and the community in educating young black kids that one foot before the other one, and you can accomplish anything if you believe. First thing you got to know that God created all of us equal. And when they hear about, well, black lives matter, your black life do matter. Every life God created mattered. So, the people I got here for February fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, at the MLK Center from five-thirty to eight, I will be honoring six people, like some of the folks in here that already have been on it a year or two ago before the pandemic hit us and put us down. Well, it won't hold us down long. We all in this together, surviving, creating, and shaking back. And that's what I do. I try to find people that deserve and they need to know that you are loved. You have not been forgotten, but your work speaks for you. You ever heard that? Let the work I done speak for me. When I go back and I look at people like Ms. Robinson, it took me a while to reel her in, but I reel her in by the help of a lot of people that love her and know her all her life. Both of the Harris brothers, Mr. Ronnie Evans, Ms. Sonia Stills was the captain over in Northwestern Police Department for years, thirty-some years, I think. You got Ms. Linda Queen, which has been a, you know, forefront leader for feeding the hunger in people throughout the City of Nakadish and still doing it. And me, myself, I moved here from Shreveport some twenty-five years ago, and it's been a long time coming, but I appreciate you for recognizing me and the work I do. And I'm just glad that God allowed me and blessed me to be able to do it, and I'm going to do it till he called me home. So, I'm going to say, let the work I do speak for me, because I can't brag about it. It's by his grace and mercy that I'm able to do it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Can I have you here?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Can you see me over the? I didn't bring my stool. I'm going to have, first of all, I'm Jessica Broadway. I'm a partner at Thomas Cunningham Broadway &amp; Totin Beer. I've been there since two thousand three, and I have done the city's audit for many years now. The city's audit is actually due May thirty, I'm sorry, the year-end is May thirty-first, and it is due November thirtieth. But due to the Christmas season and how busy the city is, we typically don't get here until the new year to actually present the audit. It's just too difficult to try in December. I want you guys to go ahead and turn to page one oh eight, and while you're doing that, if you have your audit report. And while you're doing that, I just want to say that, as you all know, this last audit year was, was not audit year, the financial year was very difficult for the finance department with people coming in and going out. And I really was, you know, we didn't know what we were going to get in numbers there, but Clarissa and the finance department, they pulled together so well and handed us just, I mean, numbers that we could work with, that we could move forward. Any question we had could be answered. So, it was just, in the end, it was, it worked out really well. I know it was a difficult time for the finance department, but in the end, and meeting with you since, it's really, really, they're bringing it all together. On this page, on page one oh eight, this is called our schedule of findings and questioned costs. There was, an unmodified opinion was issued on the City of Nakadish, which is good. There was no material weaknesses noted, no instances of noncompliance. In addition, because the city received over seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards, we also have to do a single audit, is what it is called, where we have to review the federal awards. On that, our specific award was Federal Aviation Administration. There were no findings related to that. Everything was clear as well. Let's see, I'm gonna, let's go to, move back to page sixteen. On page sixteen, this is what shows the short-term view of the major funds and general fund of the City of Nakadish. So, you can see in the column, the general fund, at the end of the year, there was an unassigned fund balance, which means it can be used, it's not restricted. And so, that amount was three point eight million at the end of the year. So, the City of Nakadish, their general fund is in great financial health. I'm going to also, if you turn to the next page, I'm sorry, page eighteen, you will also see here, this is where the general fund is broken out, where it gives taxes received, their expenditures by function, as well as any transfers in or out. And again, you will see that at the end of the year, there was a three point eight million dollar unassigned fund balance in the general fund. I'm not going to go through all of this. I won't bore y'all with that, but anytime, if any of you have any questions about this audit report, just give me a call. But right now, do any of you have any questions?
Could you give your phone number, please?
Three one eight, three five two, three six five two.
Three six five two?
And ask for Mark Thomas. No, just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I know Mark. I'm going to call that's morning.
No, look, I was at a presentation in Baton Rouge, and the lady kept on saying, don't ask for me, ask for the other person.
Mark will just send it right to me, so.
Look, and I, Mrs. Broadway, I would just echo what you said earlier about Clarissa and her team. They've been phenomenal. You know, we see Clarissa at these meetings, but Jenna is another one. Of course, Bree on the payroll side. Of course, Tasha's been stable for so long in the finance. And actually, we've been trying to get another person, so they've been doing this, you know, I guess historically down two people, you know? So, really just phenomenal work by them. So, I just thought it was worth echoing what you said at the top of your remarks. The federal awards, you said seven fifty, thankfully in the future, we'll certainly exceed that amount.
Yes.
Based on, you know, some of the wins we've had recently with, the raise grant comes to mind, seventeen point two million. So, we'll be seeing that come down later on. So, and I just, you know, you had a very positive meeting with us a few weeks back, and so, I'm glad that they've been accommodating and done the heroic work that they've done, given the circumstances. And I think the council fully will know that, you know, we went about seven months without a finance director, so.
I was scared.
Yep.
They did wonderful. They did wonderful.
They did. They did. Okay. Counsel, you good? All right. We do have, we emailed an electronic copy on Tuesday, but we have a physical copy before you get out of here, okay? All right, we'll make sure we get that to you. All right, Mrs. Broadway, I think, I don't think we have any questions. Well, we actually, since it's not a voting item.
I just wanted to know something.
Well, Mrs. Broadway, I don't know if you're going to stay longer, but maybe not. You probably got to get on, but.
My kids are in college now.
Yeah, I know, I know. But, yeah, we, so we don't, it's not a voting item, so we, maybe you can get with her as she's leaving or something, if she will.
But, I mean, you can ask me a question.
Oh, of course, I'd like to actually know, at this particular point right now, how much does that the city have in general form?
That's what I was saying. Now, this is as of May thirty-first, of course, of two thousand twenty-two, so I have not looked at, I have not looked at any of the numbers since then, but the cash balance is four point one million. Now, that may sound like a lot, but when you look at the general fund budget, the one year's budget is fifteen point seven million dollars. So, four million wouldn't even, is like a quarter, you know, get them through a quarter. So, like I said, that's still healthy that they have that much in advance, but, you know, it's still.
Where, can you just kind of elaborate on how much did they actually spend over the year?
Yes. Well, I said their budget. When I say their budget was fifteen million.
So, how much did they actually spend?
Fifteen million. Fifteen point seven million. And they received nine point three million in revenue.
And that include grants and?
Taxes, yes.
Yes, sir. The bond reserve?
Stacy, do we need them, you need them to come to the mic?
Yes.
Hey, look, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're going to need them to address the microphone if we are going to have questions, if you're going to take questions. So, we would need y'all to come to the microphone and say it on the record.
That was just one question that I had.
Yeah, we don't know what it was. But was it, I mean, at least, maybe you could repeat it, Mrs. Broadway?
If the.
Just for the people who are listening.
If the bond reserve accounts were being funded, and yes, there's ample funding in the bond reserves in order to ensure that they can be paid in the future.
Okay.
I thought that you were going to discuss the education part of, oh, we had two point four in education for children, but we're going to worry that the five point four million, that's what I thought I saw at the library.
No, sir, this is just for the audit representation for the City of Nakadish. It's not a direct influence on education. This is for the City of Nakadish. You may be referring to the.
Parish Council or maybe the school board.
This is a city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
It's probably the school board you're referring to, I'm sure.
I was. It doesn't have to do with education.
Right. The school.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Broadway. We appreciate you being here.
All right. And as I said, if you have any questions, y'all, give me a call. I'm always available, or Mark is. Thank y'all.
Pass the buck.
Thanks a lot.
That's right.
All right. Our next few items are for final, all right? And the first one is ordinance number zero zero five, and that's Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance upon the recommendation of the finance department that the City of Nakadish enter into a lease of a two, a twenty-nine point seven acre tract and industrial park for hay operations with M and M Farms of Kane River, LOC, and authorizing the mayor, Rodney Williams, Jr., to execute said lease on behalf of the City of Nakadish and to provide for advertising. And this is for final. So, this ordinance was introduced on January the twenty-third and published in the Nakadish Times on January twenty-sixth, February second, and February ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and I move final adoption of ordinance number zero zero five of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I think he's grabbing the microphone over there. And Ed, I know there are four of these in a row. I know they each stand on their own, but, so you're not so much of a broken record, I don't know how much you could say now about the rest of the ones that are coming up after this.
Yeah, the first three are hay leases. They're all at six dollars and fifty cents per round bale. These are properties that are owned by the city, and it helps the city to, so that we're not using our labor, equipment, fuel to maintain these properties. And it also prevents the hay, the grass, from going to waste. So, it's a win-win for all of us, because it adds up, just these first three are about two hundred and fifty acres total, and we don't have to spend the city's resources to maintain the hay part of it.
Practice we've had as long as you've been with the city?
Pardon me?
This is a practice we've had as long as you've been with the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or questions here? Any public comments on this item? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy.
Eli?
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
This one, wait.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. We would have to get you to come to the microphone. State your first and last name.
Sorry for my intrusion. I am Percy Powell, and the reason why I'm here is because I studied agriculture, and I know the value of hay. Now, my question that I want to raise, would the proceeds, proceeds, if you will, that be generated from this, will it come back into the city? Because we can use that as fuel, because there's only a few woods or hays that are actually used for natural fuel, like cedar.
Okay.
And like pine. All of that stuff can be turned into fuel for diesel and fuel for particular lights and, you know, natural gas and that different type.
So, the question is, do the proceeds come back to the city?
Yeah, all of it comes back to the city.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. All right, Mrs. Stacy, seeing no other comment, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number zero zero seven, that's Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero seven of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance upon the recommendations of the finance department that the City of Nakadish enter into a lease of twenty-five acre tract in the industrial park for hay operations with James R. Stacy. I also move that ordinance number zero zero seven be adopted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt ordinance number zero zero seven. Ed explained it earlier. It's a hay lease, just like this first one that was read, and then the one that's coming after it as well. So, Counsel, any questions come to mind on this one? All right, any public comments or questions? Okay, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
That ordinance, that motion passes as well. Next item is ordinance number zero zero eight of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero eight, the ordinance upon the recommendation of the finance department and the airport commission that the city council of the City of Nakadish authorize the lease that the area, area under finance at the Nakadish Regional Airport for a hay operation with James Russell Stacy and authorize the mayor, Rodney Williams, Jr., to execute said lease on behalf of the City of Nakadish and to provide for advertising. This was introduced on last meeting, and I move to adopt ordinance number zero zero eight of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Again, what Ed said earlier, it's another hay lease that we've got here, all right? And you see any comment or question here, Counsel? Any public comment or question on this item? Okay, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number zero zero nine, excuse me, and that's Councilman Harrington.
Ordinance zero zero nine of two thousand twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Nakadish, Rodney Williams, to execute an agricultural lease from the City of Nakadish in favor of John. in favor of John Danley and Sally Danley of that property located between the South Louisiana Highway One Bypass and Waterway Road being tracks B and D, as shown on a survey by Glenn L. Cannon dated October two thousand five and recorded at map slide five six nine B of the records of Natchitoches Parish, Louisiana, and further consenting to a sublease from Pilgrim's Pride to Russell Stacy of track B, as shown on a survey by Glenn L. Cannon dated October two thousand five and recorded at map slide five sixty nine B of the records of Natchitoches Parish, Louisiana, and further providing for advertising of the lease, a public hearing, and an effective date. I move to adopt um ordinance zero zero nine of two thousand twenty three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ed, is this the one a little different from the other three?
This one's a little different, this is a row crop lease, this is part of that land that's behind the Pilgrim's Pride feet mill, and it's been farmed for many years, so this one is a row crop lease instead of a hay lease.
Comments or questions, council? Any public comments or questions about this one? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Right, that motion carries as well. Next item is um item number, or ordinance number zero one zero, that's Councilwoman at large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, this for final, which is ordinance, an ordinance to designate funds from the American Rescue Plan to assist with the water treatment project in the City of Natchitoches that are essential to public health and welfare and to otherwise provide respect there too. And Mayor, this was introduced, this ordinance was introduced on January twenty third and published in the Natchitoches Times on January the twenty sixth. And um I move for adoption of ordinance, art- ordinance number zero one zero twenty twenty three.
All right, motion made and seconded to um adopt this ordinance. Um as we mentioned in our introduction on the twenty third, this is uh using uh some of the American Rescue Plan money to match what we saw as a coming um announcement. And Steve, do you have that other um flyer that I sent over to you? All right, and uh timing has worked out, I think, quite well for us. Oh, it's a, oh yeah, there we go. Yeah, make that bigger. All right, so we found out on, I got a letter on um Friday, uh never checked the mail, but the mailman was just, uh the mail carrier, I should say, it's appropriate what you're saying, um was uh coming at the same time I was going into the building at City Hall, and we got our letter. Uh five million dollars for the City of Natchitoches water treatment improvements. So something we have been anticipating for some time. Of course, Representative Fermit, I think, uh kinda um stated some things first, but we didn't want to count it until we had the letter from the Division of Administration. So this is a huge, huge win for the City of Natchitoches. To kind of give you some perspective, I stated this before, um according to the Louisiana Illuminator, um we know that the state government for water and sewer put aside seven hundred and fifty million dollars for the allocation from um, I mean, their own allocation of American Rescue Plan dollars, and they put it aside for grant opportunity, competitive grant opportunities. According to the Louisiana Illuminator, um seven hundred and fifty million, I mean, we should be grateful for, but there were four billion dollars worth of requests for water and sewer. Let that soak in a little bit, four billion dollars that that cities all across Louisiana request it. So that means that about three point three, or a little less than three point three billion dollars worth of requests did not get funded. The fact that we get, got funded is, first of all, wasn't a guarantee, uh and it is a big deal, because there are many others who are not getting this funding uh to help with their water treatment needs. So again, we're just so grateful, so ecstatic uh for our team of um, you know, grant writers, engineers, uh utility director, uh legislators, the governor himself, uh and tonight, well, today KS LA came down, did an interview, interview, sort of be showing up on the six o'clock news, which you are here right now, but uh um so six o'clock news, and again, on the ten o'clock news, uh it will be showing again, so we're excited about that. The young lady Jasmine even went to take pictures of the water treatment plant, so we're grateful. This is great news, and it's great timing uh to match those American Rescue Plan dollars with the five million that a lot of places unfortunately didn't get, but we did, so we should be blessed. All right.
Great.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, uh council, you got any comment or question?
It's great. It's gonna help.
Just to remind us, we're saying that we're estimating now, Matt, this project, total project to be around what?
Around sixteen million.
Around sixteen million, and of course, we know how construction costs. Everybody over there to my right, all non-departmental, there's no uh dealing with construction in this day and time. You know, you get a quote on something, and it it may not uh be be that same number, so. But but we're grateful to have five million dollars to go toward it. Any public comment or question about this particular uh item on the agenda? Again, the one point five, the one point two five million from American Rescue Plan to match it with um these scarce grant dollars. Uh this is one point two five to match the five million. It's a twenty five percent match, is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Yep. Steve, you can put us out.
This ain't gonna take three minutes. It's a lama laga to my brothers and sisters called CS. The question I want to ask is, all in in history, Natchitoches have not received as much money it have ever reached a limit of receiving. My question is, when that the people of the community and around town will start seeing the action of this money going to work? We hear about it, we talk about it, and everything else, the American Rescue Plan giving money, you all asked the public to raise the utilities and everything else when we thought that the city was in a bind. Y'all got five hundred, five million dollars, uh I seen it on the journal. You taking money from the rescue uh mission, you taking money from the people. When is all this gonna start taking place? The work and the money that the federal government have pumped into our city? When would this money come available? When would the work begin? When would it start, when would it finish? And people want to know, I want to know.
It just uh, Mr. Sias, it depends on which grant we're talking about, so the.
I'm talking about, and, excuse me, I'm talking, I got a minute and sixteen, you can answer after I get through. I'm talking about all the grants that Natchitoches have received, but there is no work being done in the town. This whole town got to be trashed throughout this whole city. But we sit up in here, we talk about big dollars, and people not seeing big dollars being spent in the communities and anything else, uh where's this going? What time is it gonna get started? Uh yeah, I got forty five seconds. My my question is, we need to stop talking about things and start doing all this money. We have received more money in this town in history. And yet and still, the people have not seen any result of the money that the federal government given to the City of Natchitoches. We talk about it, but it ain't happening.
So the one point, let me just answer part of that, the one point six million we got for HVAC improvements, that's already uh started uh very well in that project for the MLK Rec Center, and the Event Center will be next, we're waiting on HVAC units to come. Uh we know supply issues are are part of the the problem with that. We will see very soon the four hundred thousand dollars for the Lake Street Park, the Richardson Park, we call it on Lake Street. So a lot of these grant uh wins, what you have to do is, there's some paperwork with, uh it depends on which government. So if you're talking about state government, there's some back and forth, make sure you get this signed. I just got an email from uh Randall Smoke on the environmental review. So we we should be be able to start uh the bid process for the Richardson Park. Uh hopefully, um you know, y'all always have to kind of estimate these, approximate these times. But hopefully, we can start next month, and then work can begin uh late spring. All right, uh we've used some of the American Rescue Plan dollars as we, we have different projects to deal with um um, you know, properties that needed to be demolished, so forth and so on. The seventeen point two million, that's gonna be another kind of uh back and forth, this time with the Federal DOT Department of Transportation. Then you got your design phase, and so design, you know, design is part of the project, and people don't see it, but you can't just move and do something, it has to be designed out by engineers. Um Matt, is there any indication on the five million? Um I know there'll be a design process with that too.
Yeah, I think.
And I know everything's just kind of fluid as well.
I think they estimated the design about nine months.
Okay.
Just about to get started now that we have the letter.
Right, right, yeah, so it takes time to design, but some of these projects we moved on, namely, would be the HVAC at the MLK Center, and then working on the Event Center as well. And the lift station, right?
The two million dollar block grant that we received uh last year.
Oh, hey, that's right.
Yes, that and the new water well, that's being done now, as we speak.
So that work is going on right now?
Yes.
And um the Kaiser Lift Station?
Yeah, Kaiser Lift Station is another one that's about to get started.
That was a four hundred eighty thousand dollar grant.
Uh material's been ordered for that, and then the Grand Decor and Mill- Mill Street Lift Stations will be starting very soon. Uh equipment's on order for that also.
Thanks a lot uh for that. Uh any other public comment before we move on? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. These next few items are ordinances that are for introduction. Um so again, they won't be voted on tonight, that'll be at our next meeting for most of them. Uh and this first ordinance that's being introduced is ordinance number zero one one, and that's Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero one one of two thousand twenty three, an ordinance approving the acquisition of a water fountain for placement in Kane River Lake and further authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agree, or cooperative agreement with Kane River Waterway District related to the acquisition of the water fountain and to execute any and all other related documents that might be necessary and proper to provide for advertising and a savings clause. And basically, the amount that um being the opinion that it's the participation in project will enhance Kane River Lake, the commission has agreed to contribute forty five thousand dollars towards the cost of the acquisition and placement of an additional water fountain in the area of downtown Riverbank, and this is for introduction.
I'm sorry, did you finish?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um I know Randy and Ed have been close with this. Randy, is there anything outside, maybe sum it up, simplify it in terms different than how the ordinance is written?
And really, maybe Matt should comment, because we were starting to have major problems with the old fountain, we were repairing it constantly, and that's what drove us to asking the Waterway Commission if they would consider it. Uh so Ed's been involved with that too, and Matt knows are the technical side of it. But with them funding it, I think our department will actually do the work to change it out. Matt, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna put it on the other side of the bridge, correct? Of the existing one, or we're replacing the existing one? From what I understand, we're gonna put it kind of in front of the stage.
Yeah, I think that was in the intention as long as the old one still operates.
Yes, it's still operating, so.
Yes.
I think we'll put it on the other side of the bridge, from what I understand.
So we'll have two?
Correct.
At some time, okay.
Until the second one dies.
Until the old one goes out.
Yeah, and we were putting that thing in when uh nine eleven happened, so that's how old it is.
Yeah.
So you say you always remember what you were doing when you heard the news? That's what we were doing, installing that fountain.
Tenth grade, Miss Evers keyboarding class, never forget. Yeah. All right, so for for some time, we will have two, but eventually, we think the one that was put in around nine eleven will, is gonna get to the end of life, so. All right, and I think a fountain has already been selected and everything, right?
It has.
It has, okay. All right, good.
But we haven't placed any orders, done anything committal, committal until it goes through the process with the City Council and the Kane River Waterway.
Got you, got you. Uh council, any questions, comments about this? Just another example of a good partnership with uh a local entity that's been going on for years.
Let me ask, Mayor, that location is right by the Kaiser Bridge, right?
Um I wouldn't say that.
Church Street Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, Church Street Bridge, yeah.
Got you.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, this is only, I'm sorry, are you gonna say something?
Yeah, it'll be across from the stage on the downtown Riverbank.
Okay, all right, and this is just for introduction, we'll take public comments at our next meeting when this is up for a vote on the twenty twenty seven. Okay, council, you got any more, you good on this? All right, um next item just being introduced is ordinance number zero uh one two of two thousand twenty three, and that's Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance number twelve of two thousand twenty three, is an ordinance approving a memorandum of cooperative endeavor between the City of Natchitoches, the Red River Waterway Commission, and the Natchitoches Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote the u, to promote the use of Red River for the two thousand twenty three Mr. Krapi Invitational Qualifier. Mr. Introduction only.
Okey dokey, um I know this is a partnership, City and CBB. Um I also know Jill Leo is a, well, I know she does some work with us as well, but as you can see from the agreement, twenty five thousand will be given by the River of Waterway Commission to, basically, to have a list of things to do uh that ought to be done. But the main thing is to promote this Mr. Krapi um two thousand twenty three Invitational Qualifier. So I think it's good for the City of Natchitoches, we have folks coming in uh in the town, and we know that helps to stimulate our economy, and so uh this is a win-win across the city, anything, which is gonna help along with the CBB's um guidance and and partnership to promote this event. So uh council, you got any comments or questions about this?
It's gonna be a good event.
Okay, yep, I believe that as well. All righty, okay, again, this will be up on the agenda on the twenty seventh. All right, um next item on the agenda, ordinance number zero one three of two thousand twenty three, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number thirteen of two thousand twenty three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches to award the bid for a bucket truck used for the City of Natchitoches Utility Department, bid number zero six five six, whereas Resolution number four of two thousand twenty three was passed by the Natchitoches City Council on January nine, two thousand twenty three, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for a pu, bucket truck used for the Natchitoches Utility Department, and whereas this bid was advertised in the Natchitoches Times on January fourteen, January twenty one, and January twenty eight, two thousand twenty three, in accordance with law, whereas one bid proposal was received and opened as follows, Altech Industries Incorporated, St. Joseph, Missouri, one hundred and twenty five thousand. And whereas on February seven, two thousand twenty three, the appointed committee of Clarissa Smith, Finance Director, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Utility Director, and Eddie Harrington, Councilman, reviewed the bid proposals for a bucket truck for the Natchitoches Utility Department, and whereas the above appointed committee unanimously recommended the city award the bid to the only bidder, Altech Industries Incorporated, in the amount of one hundred and twenty five thousand. And this is for introduction.
Matt, bucket trucks, um I mean, these are, you use these in what way, your department does?
Uh they're the trucks you see that the men get in and go up and work on transformers and power lines, things of that nature.
Yep, so uh I I know everybody understands it's something we really need, but we only had one bid, so. But we only had one bid, so, you know. Council, you got any comments, questions? Okay, again, this will be on the agenda, uh, at our next meeting, twenty-seventh. All right, next item is ordinance number zero one four, and it's Councilwoman in Large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero one four of two thousand and twenty-three. It's an ordinance to amend section sixteen, one dash one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches to provide for an enlarged local Nacogdoches, Nacogdoches Historic District, which section is located in chapter sixteen point one of the Code of Ordinances entitled Historic District, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for repealer and effective date of ordinance. Whereas the limits of the local Nacogdoches Historic District are set for in section sixteen, one, one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches. And whereas a review by the Office of Mayor recommendation has been made that the limits of the local historic district be amended to include an additional area. And whereas further, the recommendation is that the limits of a local historic district to historic district be enlarged to include an area to the northwest of the existing limits, including exiting limits, including areas along Texas Street and Brita, Brita Avenue. And whereas the city council of the city of Nacogdoches, Louisiana, desires to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches in order to amend and reenact sections sixteen, one dash one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches. And whereas and whereas upon presiding, the office's desire declared that the above ordinance be, uh, adopted once approved. And that's all I have to read. This, the, the areas to be annexed in are to the city for historic districts. There's a lot to read, so I'm not going to read it all. Maybe someone here to come in on this section. I know there's a map that we have. I don't know if it's going to be up on the board or not to show the area that's going to be annexed in.
Yeah, it's the same map that we have on the board. Yeah, I know we have, uh, Dr. Steve Horton, are you going to speak on this item? Yes, sir. I want to invite Dr. Steve Horton to the podium to speak.
This is for introduction only.
Good evening. I'm Steve Horton, and I'm representing several entities, I guess, this evening. But my primary role is I'm the Executive Director of the Louisiana School for Math, Science, and the Arts. I also sit on the Northwestern State University Foundation Board of Directors, and I'm Vice Chair of the Nacogdoches Historic District Commission. First, uh, I will speak for the Louisiana School. We are excited, actually thrilled to have this opportunity across the street. Our students have the ability to travel the community based by, on how the school is set up. And one thing our students always will mention is, except for the few things available to them on, on University Parkway, our students usually have to travel or we have to bus them to the other side of town just for simple activities such as eating in a restaurant or, or shopping at Walmart. So for us, we would be grateful to have that, that entity across the street from us because I think it would, would in- increase the visibility of the university, the Louisiana School, but just the, the entry into the city of Nacogdoches. But I know I'm here for the Historic District Commission, and I do, um, say this with a tongue-in-cheek, but usually the Historic District Commission gets caught for any type of, of, of implementation of, of a requirement for the district. But I promise you, we do not get into telling someone what color they will paint their house or anything like that. You have to be very sensitive, uh, when you're looking at a historic district for what's surrounding it. Properties on Front Street are very different than properties on Third and Fourth Street. And you have to take into account when the properties were built and what they're built of and the condition they're in, and you have to be very sensitive to monies that are available because it's expensive to maintain a historic property. But we are very careful as a commission, when someone commits, uh, submits an application on behalf of a homeowner, that we take into account the best practice for a historic district. We also take into account the status of that property. If it's a contributing property, which means it's at the highest level, of course, we're going to take extra steps to maintain the integrity of that property and other properties in that neighborhood. But I can assure you that coming into the historic district is not a negative, for sure. If anything, it's a positive. And hopefully, you all have recognized that benefit when we created this historic district that we're referring to tonight, when it was extended into other areas of, of the original district. How much better, um, it's, it's been in navigating change, navigating improvements. But I do want to assure you from that standpoint, uh, the district will cooperate, actually be thrilled to have them in the district and take the necessary steps to allow them to, to fall into that, um, district and benefit from it. And then lastly, from the Northwestern side, again, I speak from NSU, but I also can speak from Louisiana School. We would love to have that across the street from us. It would let us compete with other universities all over the state and nation that have these areas across that, uh, that develop a, a spirit of student life. And that's something that, that COVID and all those other things that have come along in the last several years have taken away from, from the university. But also, it has hampered the Louisiana School. So I'm speaking for all of them. We will, we are happy to consider this, welcome it, and work with all of those entities to see it succeed.
And thank you so much, Dr. Horton, for being here. And say, no, no, I want you to say for just a moment-
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Because the council may have, uh, some questions. And I'm glad you mentioned everything you did. Uh, you mentioned where LSMSA is. I think everybody knows on University Parkway and how, being the Executive Director, there's no issue in, in, from your standpoint in being, uh, brought into the historic district. Now, tonight's legislation doesn't include that, but, um, I certainly don't have an issue, um, with it. I'm sure the council is going to state their opinion, uh, as well. I did speak to one business owner today about it, and I assume that there was, um, one pretty, um, uh, maybe, uh, influential entity, best way to say it, like a better word.
Sure.
That maybe had had some issue on the University Parkway, but that may not be, uh, the case, I'm being told. So, um, I do appreciate your remarks on that. And, and Dr. Horton has been a part of, uh, conversations we've had with the master plan. Ed Lee was at our most, most recent meeting. Also, Mr. Busada just walked in. He's been a part of those meetings, uh, as well. And what we're trying to do is, on that campus edge, like you mentioned, creating that, um, type of atmosphere that, um, other communities have, and they've seen it spur economic growth, and they've seen it be just a benefit, not only to businesses on that corridor, but also to the students who are, uh, educated. Now, for us, we, you know, we're blessed. We don't know how blessed we are because we have the state's designated high school for, um, Math, Science, and the Art. We have the state's designated Scholars College. And then we have the Northwestern State University. So again, that's, that's, that's really amazing that we have all of those right there. But I appreciate your comments-
Absolutely.
Um, on many different areas, not only the Texas Street, which is before us, uh, but also what you're saying about University Parkway. And then what you're saying as well, people don't have to be, um, you know, kind of fret. They don't have to fret being into this.
It creates a large community, and that's, and I, I say that because for the university and the Louisiana School, it puts all of us in one large community, and it only will benefit the fact that we're an old community, and we have a lot of older properties that we need to be proud of. And, and this ordinance does help you keep, um, some element of, um, I guess, standard.
Mm-hmm.
But that standard and, and grateful for the, the ordinance is very general and very, in a lot of areas, and it's very specific in a lot of areas. But that generality does allow the commission to work individually with a homeowner to let them move toward their goals at the, at the speed that they can afford it or that the speed that they want to do it. So that's one thing I am proud of, the commission. We've been very successful, and I do want to give a, an accolade to law enforcement, all, all of the first responders. From the Louisiana School's standpoint and the district, you've been nothing but supportive to us. So I, I can't imagine this would be any different.
Right. Council, do y'all have any comments or questions? I don't know if it's for Dr. Horton or just some comments in general, so.
I got a question, or maybe you, if you're a part of that board, you probably can help me understand it. So as far as making a decision on what comes into the historic district, the board makes that call?
No, sir. I would believe the council would make that call. We, we're offering our support for it, just as we did the, the time before when the area was expanded and actually when we got originally out of that national historic district that, that encompasses the very small area of downtown. We're just saying that we support it, and we've had success, great successes, working with the communities to see them or work with them to develop their neighborhoods to the potential they want to see. That's, that's really what we're saying.
And also, like the train depot, it falls in that area as well, right, the historic district?
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking, asking this is because the Ben Johnson Auditorium, and from my understanding, it was like the first black school that we had here. And so, it got like historical significance to it.
Right.
So at some point, I would like to see it be a part of that, too. And maybe also the Jackson Square graveyard, you know, so, but that's another conversation for a later time, but.
It, it's doable, for sure. And again, we've been successful as a community because we back it. The, the, I, I believe the community backs it, and the commission is representative and, of, of all of us. And, and I've been, nothing but impressed with the homeowners who come forward because they have the right, they have the right mindset. They want to improve, and coming to the district, yes, that's, that's a step that probably not a lot of, uh, communities have. But I think everyone appreciates what it's done for tourism, uh, what it's done for economic development. And again, the fact that it makes these areas or put these areas in this larger community of Northwestern Louisiana School, the Scholars College, those things that we, we need to be proud of because they've kept us alive for so many years. But absolutely, definitely, yes.
Councilman PT, also, if you want to amend or change the boundaries, that is a council's function.
Oh, gotcha.
So you, you could just talk to your colleagues if you want to include it.
We work with what y'all give us. That's one thing I can say, we work with what y'all give us.
But correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't MLK one of the streets incorporated into this or not?
Not in the last amendment, no, ma'am.
That's something new, and I thought reading-
I believe it cut off right before then, so.
On Fifth Street, was it Fifth?
The train depot, too.
The train depot, I believe, is where, so that would be Fifth, Sixth Street, maybe? I think that's where it cuts off. But there are a lot of, there are definitely a lot of historic structures on the MLK, in the MLK area that we would one day be very fortunate if we would all move toward preserving those or protecting them because they're going to get torn down one day and we're not going to be able to stop it. That's a lot of the problem in the historic district. Things have been torn down or burned down for no reason except it just happened. And, and we can't let that happen to the city.
It needs to be preserved. I agree with Councilman PT.
Any other comment, council?
I just really haven't had time to discuss the map. I do believe Uni- University Parkway should be considered before we, uh, pull the trigger as well as the entire Texas Street corridor. I don't think that is part of.
That's why I was looking ahead of time to see what it was encompassing, but.
It, it's-
Alex, do you know how much of Texas Street this covers?
Yeah, from Texas Street to Brita Avenue. So starting from downtown and, um, Brita Avenue to the right.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I was reading, and it's a lot to read, but I was reading over this. And what I was given, I don't know if anyone else was giving, the areas that were to be incorporated into this historic district. And I was under the assumption that it would go to MLK. And maybe I, I mean, I misunderstood, but that was my assumption, reading this, that it would cover, uh, from the university, Texas Street, Washington Street, Brita Avenue, uh, all the way back to MLK, encompassing Fifth Street also and Lafayette Street. That was my understanding, six, so, um, someone needs to correct me if I'm wrong, but me reading it, that's my assumption of what was going to be part of the historic district.
I do know there's another effort by Rebecca Blankenbaker that could be, you know, she's got an effort where she's-
That's a, that's the part for the University Parkway, that, that corridor part, that's, would be part of this. So I was looking to see how much of it was in there. The, the, I can't tell how far back it goes into the Texas Street area. If it does, the benefits still are there. If it doesn't, it is probably something that definitely needs to be considered because of the age and the significance of properties in that area. You have to be ca- you want to be careful not to put someone in a situation as a homeowner they can't afford to maintain their house because that's scary as well. And we have that problem in the entire historic district. But again, if you have a commission which you appoint is sensitive to the needs of those neighborhoods throughout the entire district, and you treat each neighborhood as its own and take the standards and apply it to them, any property is going to benefit by being in, in the Nacogdoches Historic District.
Yep. All right, council, it's Mrs., Dr. Steve Horton, please finish with him? All right, thanks again, Dr. Horton, for your time. Again, this is just being introduced. I do see some Texas Street business owners here, but I, I will piggyback off what Alex said, that good thing about ordinances being introduced, there's time, uh, to, if council, we see some changes. I hear you, Councilman Nielsen, you said some things, Councilwoman in Large Smith. Uh, we've got, you know, we've got, it's just been introduced, so we can, we can do those things.
Yeah, yeah, and, and anytime, it's no, in your ordinances, if you can come back later, if y'all do a study, you want to make some additional changes, you can.
Well, we would like to do that.
Right, so at this point, this would be, this would be the Texas Street going to Brita Avenue, and it will cross over, you mentioned Sixth Street, it's going to cross, it's going to cross over those streets. Uh, but the main thoroughfare, the Texas Avenue going to Brita Town, I'm sorry, Brita Avenue, is what this encompasses. But we can come back four months from now. If you want to add a school, and y'all agree that's what y'all want to move forward, we, we can move forward and make, make those adjustments.
Okay.
But we have a lot of businesses that's on Texas Avenue that's recently open, um, over the last several months. Uh, and so the goal would be to try to bring those businesses in, including the Brita Avenue area.
And this, this opens up more opportunity for the businesses, and, and maybe Mr. Horton can answer to this. Um, and doesn't this open up potential tax incentives as well?
Yes.
For businesses and homeowners?
And residents.
Yeah, for any repairs they're doing, any, anything like that? So when you're in a historic district, so there's federal tax incentives that you can apply for and.
I think it'd be great.
Well, council, I would say get those comments to us via email so we could have them, and we could, um, you know, see what, what it looks like to make some changes to it, okay?
And there, there were some concerns mentioned, and I had a concern initially about increasing the historic district. And if you do, and if you increase it and include buildings that aren't technically historical, could that adding more non, um, contributing buildings, could it hinder the historic district with the Department of the Interior? And it was several years ago, I, I had, I contacted Department of Interior about a building that, um, next to the Methodist Church, about debating tearing it down. The Department of Interior said if you do, you lose that building, you lose that, that building that's on that list that could hinder the historic district eventually. And so my worry was if you allow more buildings in, if they're not technically historic, um, you know, where they are not, you got to go through this process, could that hinder it? But I did get an answer today that, no, it couldn't. So that's-
The designations that the, the park service or the registry gives you allows you that, that that it's significant if you want to tear it down, we have to be very careful in that decision. If it can affect the district status, that they're not contributing, it's a lot easier to make a decision.
Yeah, so that, I just wanted, because I know, I had that worry, I know others did, but that's been, that's been resolved, so.
Right, can Councilman, uh, councilmen and women, uh, any comments, please get it to us, all right? All right, um, that is just, just introduced tonight, okay? Next item on the agenda, also for introduction, is ordinance number fifteen of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance fifteen of two thousand twenty-three, which is an ordinance of the Nacogdoches City Council creating Economic Development District within the city of Nacogdoches to be named the Nacogdoches Economic Development District F, state of Louisiana, defining the boundaries thereof from which certain area, local, and potentially state sales and use tax increments will be determined and used to finance economic development projects within the district. All is authorized by Part Two of Chapter Twenty-seven of Title Thirty-three of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of nineteen fifty as amended and providing for other matters in connection with the four-
for other matters in connection with the foregoing. I'll read by title only and have it explained.
Yep. Mr. Mike Busada is here.
All right. Thank you so much. Good to see everyone. What this ordinance will do is create the Mill District, is what we call the Mill District.
And I'll say that your name, Mike, but just out of tradition.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, Mike Busada.
Yeah.
Supposed to give my address?
No.
Okay. I get confused. Some places they, some places they require you like give your social security number out and everything.
Right, right.
It's been a long day. But this will create an Economic Development District around the Mill District. This area is, as you know, has a lot of amazing potential to really develop into something special with Flying Heart Brewery there and continuing to grow, expand, and a lot of other interests. This district would allow the city to incentivize and to keep resources and increase resources that are put in this area to help create a district, an entertainment district, and then improve the quality of life. And so it is today, what this will do is just, it just creates a district and it designates the local increment of taxes that doesn't, this piece doesn't have anything to do with raising taxes or anything. It just designates the local taxes that are already being levied. Anything above what was collected last year from a portion of that will be able to stay in this district and be reinvested in this district for infrastructure purposes.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Busada?
The the amount that stays in the district, is there at any point that goes in the general fund? Or is it, it's designated for that district, so it'll stay there, correct?
Yeah, right now, based on the way that it's written now, it would stay there and it's one point, one point five percent would would basically stay in the district. And there's another one percent that is being collected that's restricted, and so that wouldn't stay in the district. And then we'll come back later after we establish a district, create the district like we've done in the past, and then discuss levying the additional Economic Development District levy.
Mayor, let me add something to that. The incentive of businesses coming in and redeveloping these buildings is where the city benefits from the sales tax revenue from sales operations. If you don't do this and they don't come, the vacant buildings just sit there and produce nothing. And same thing we did with River South Commons filled up almost eighty thousand feet, same thing would not have happened if it weren't for the district. So just wanted to add that.
Absolutely.
And I would say, counsel, I'm supposed to get this to you electronically, but we had a Natchitoches market analysis done by CSRS, and I'll get this over to you. But because I have it electronically, this is the only physical copy I have. But the next, and you know the guys at CSRS.
Very well.
The the next step, I asked Derek Fitch, okay, what's the next step? You you did the feasibility study on the Mill District because we had this, we say Andrew Bakay example. So I wanted to know, okay, what's feasible here? Can we really make this come to life? And so he said the next step is Economic Development District.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, I mean, it's it's your most powerful tool that you can use. And again, you're not, it's one, it's an economic development incentive tool where the city doesn't have, there's no situation where you lose money. Basically, right now you're collecting nothing. If you're able to incentivize people to come, revenues go up, and then you take that money and you reinvest it into the area. And so if people don't come, then you're not going to raise any money, but you wouldn't have anyway. And so basically, this is, it's a, it's a performance-based incentive to where if there is activity, everybody does better. If there's no activity, you're no worse off than you were before you did it.
And just give some perspective, I, well, maybe my recollection doesn't go back as far, but Mike was with us on the Hobby Lobby, EDD, of course, the River South Commons, as Randy just mentioned as well. And I know he doesn't want me to say this, but everybody hears about the new bucket. Mike was on that deal. And I want to know, why didn't you help us, kid? He said, no, I'm not.
I was actually in Ruston right before I came here, and I told him, I said, I'm gonna get in trouble when I go to Natchitoches tonight because they're going to ask me about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So he was on that deal. Just so I think so people can know, Mike is a part of some pretty strong economic development projects. So, counsel, you got any other questions for Mr. Busada? All right. Again, this is just for introduction, so there'll be, if there are any questions or comments from the audience, we'll certainly take those. Will it be the next meeting on the twenty-seven? Is that when we're bringing it back up?
Yeah.
For a vote?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, all right. So counsel, I'm sorry, public can ask those questions and I'll have those comments ready for then, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I know it's been a long day for you, man. Praying for your safety as you get back on the road. All right, these next few items are resolutions, so there will be a vote on them today. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Ten of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilman PT.
Thank you, mayor. Resolution Number Ten of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to adopt Bayou State Trail Infrastructure Initiative with its boundaries in collaboration with B S T A, which is Bayou State Trail Association. Whereas the city of Natchitoches committed to supporting issues and programs for the good of its citizens, city, and state, the expansion proposed by the Bayou State Trail Association provides opportunities that manifest themselves economically, socially, physically, and through an official hiking trail for public benefit and tourism. Whereas the B S T A is firmly dedicated to the development of the Fed Trail, which will serve as the state's first long-distance trail set to run in excess of three hundred miles from St. Mary Parish to Arkansas State Line, and will provide for future economic, social, and health improvement opportunities to Louisiana and the citizens of Natchitoches Parish and the city of Natchitoches. I so moved that Resolution Number Zero One Zero be adopted.
Second.
All right, motion was made and seconded. Ed, we've had conversations, we've seen the presentation once at least from the gentleman, I'm not, his name is not in my memory now, but of the Bayou State Trail. Is there any other comment? Maybe you could say about this?
Yeah, sure. This is, you see, a lot of states have trails that now, and it's something they're they're commonly doing. You see the Colorado Trail, you see the Arizona Trail, you see Appalachian Trails. So there's several trails across the country, and Steve is pulling up one right now. And that's, that's the anticipated route. That's what they would like to see. And you see, it goes from Natchitoches Parish from south to north or north, either direction, depends on how you're hiking it. But it's, a lot of people do that as a goal to walk from, you know, the whole length of a state. Part of it's in woods or wilderness area, part of it's along roads, part of it is along even interstates, cities, and it's just a lot of things, something that people are doing, and they do want to go through towns where they can spend the night in a hotel if they want to, they can get groceries, they can rest in something other than a tent. And this is getting to be a very common thing. Lieutenant Governor Nun Gesterner is behind this. He's a big supporter of it. And in what you'll see in Natchitoches Parish, if you're going from the south to the north, a big part is through Cossachi National Forest, then it'll cross I forty-nine and Highway One near Cypress, get over to Kane River, go by Oakland Plantation, walk Kane River, go up to Natchitoches, then through town, right down Front Street, then go through Granite Core Road and head out towards Winfield. So we do have a problem that they're trying to work through, and that's getting across the Red River. The bridge right now was not a good one for pedestrian traffic, so that is something that they're working on. This resolution is just to show support for this initiative to build the trail.
Okay. Look, I I just, I mean, what can you say? I mean, the fact that we're included on this trail.
Yes, that's, that's a lie. And it was something neat about from Winfield all the way up to the Arkansas-Louisiana border, they're using old rail beds that have been abandoned. So they'll, it's almost a straight shot. Once you get to Winfield, it'll go right through Ruston. And I think you may have seen some of the trails of Ruston up there that that they use for hiking, and they're very popular. So this would actually tie into that and go straight to the Arkansas border.
Yep. Great. Comments, questions, counsel, about this before you put a vote to it?
It's pretty neat.
Yeah, no, I think it's really, really great that, I mean, there's so many other cities that are not included in it, right? But we are, so.
Who who are we supporting to build the trails? Is it the state?
It's the Bayou State Trail Association.
Is it under, is it under Lieutenant Governor's office, or is it just a project kind of loosely tied to his?
He he's just a big supporter of it, but no, it's not, he has no, I guess, legal connection to it.
Gotcha.
It's strictly a supportive effort.
Gotcha. All right, public comment or question about this, Bayou State Trail? Okay. Mr. Stacy, seeing none, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Eleven of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman Washington. Eli?
Thank you, mayor. Resolution Number Zero Eleven of two thousand twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Travels Casualty Insurance Company of Americans and the Public Official Schedule Bond for the city of Natchitoches for the period of February the first of two thousand and twenty-three through February the first of two thousand twenty-four for the bond premium of three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And I move to adopt Resolution Numbers Zero Eleven of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ed, any further explanation of what this is?
Yeah, this is a public official bond. This is basically insurance for city employees that have, I guess, potent, that deal with money, whether, you know, mostly in the form of, you know, checks, writing checks and things like that to make sure that if there is something done wrong or improper, there's there's insurance for the city to recoup their money.
Okay. I think that's pretty straightforward. Counsel, you got, see any questions for Ed there? Any public questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Councilman Harrington.
Resolution Twelve of two thousand twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept bids for the purchase of a bucket truck to the city of Natchitoches Utility Department. Bid number is zero six five seven. I move to adopt Resolution Twelve of two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made and seconded. Matt, is this a different one from the?
It is. This is to replace our small bucket truck. It's a two thousand ten model. And what we're hearing from the industry is if we go out for bids for it today and award a bid, it's likely going to be two years before we receive it. So we've got to get, we've got to get in line. So we won't, we probably won't get this truck till two thousand twenty-four.
What has the wait been prior to, has it, it hasn't always been two years, right?
No, probably six months, you know, for a specialized truck like that. But we're telling us two years now.
And they're going to hold, they're going to have to hold to the bid of the, that we receive, or?
I guess that's a, it's a matter we'll have to work out.
Kind of cross that.
We've been through that before. They, they changed it for, what was it, unexpected, you know, price increases in raw materials. So, yeah, we're just trying to get in line for that bucket truck because, like I said, it's, it's thirteen years old now.
Well, counsel, questions or comments for Matt or on this item?
Well, we just voted on awarding the bid for a bucket truck. Is this something different?
Yeah, it's a smaller one, he said.
Yeah, the one we did first was for a used bucket truck.
A used?
Yeah, this is for a new, small bucket truck. They're, they're a little harder to come by, the smaller trucks.
So we got a bid for the small one, but it's going to take us two years for this larger one?
That's what we're hearing, two-year lead time if we order it now.
That's crazy.
It is.
That is.
It's very hard to manage when you have to do things like that.
So this this smaller one, I guess you can maneuver a little better?
Yes, we use it on some of the smaller streets.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one small one and and four, you know, large ones.
Okay. Counsel, you good? Any public comments or questions here? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is a Resolution Number Thirteen of two thousand twenty-three. Councilwoman Washington, Eli?
Thank you, mayor. Resolution Number Zero Thirteen of two thousand twenty-three, a resolution authorized the mayor to execute a change order number one for the West Side Water Main Replacement Phase One. Whereas the city of Natchitoches, the city awarded bid for pole construction of August the eighth of two thousand twenty-two by authorizing number zero fifty-four, two thousand twenty-two, an amount of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the West Side Water Main Replacement Phase One, bid number is zero six four eight. Whereas January the thirty, two thousand twenty-three, the contract issue, a change order number one, fully described as attached A, for forty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. And the contract total would be seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten. Whereas the project of the engineer hearing, Shailu, has recommended that the change order, whereas the city is operating, opinion, whereas the city opined the change order number one is best interest of the city, and I move to adopt Resolution Number Thirteen of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this resolution. Again, as a change order, I think it's pretty self-explanatory in the resolution. Outside of what's in the resolution, Matt, do you have any additional comment?
This change order was necessary because we got to the phase of the project where we had all the new water lines laid, and we were starting to connect them to the old water lines, to kill the old water lines out. And we had many of the valves were not functioning. It was one of the reasons we were changing the water lines and valves out to begin with. And we had to have a company come in and put what they call an inserter valve. And that's actually a picture of one right there. We had to have two of those put in on a, on the twelve-inch line, which is a pretty big water line on Welch Street. So we had to have those, it was necessary to put those in to actually complete the project.
Okay. All right. And when you and I spoke about two weeks ago, I think you were really pleased with the way that project was going.
I did. For as old as those lines are over there, and there's, there's kind of a mixture of fire protection lines and water lines over there. It's a very complicated project, and it actually went pretty well.
Okay. And as a state, it's that West Natchitoches, yeah, West Natchitoches Water Main, the Brita Town community where you got a lot of complaints about discolored water.
Yeah, we were able to get rid of about almost eight, six thousand feet of old water line. Yes.
Wow, that's a lot. That's good. That's a lot good. Yeah. Counsel, you got any comments or questions about this particular item? Other than, oh, yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Like, as far as like the replacement of pipes, do we just say, like, set a budget to do that, like throughout the city?
Yeah, in my five-year capital outlay, we we putting about seven hundred thousand dollars every year to try to do a project once a year.
Okay. No, appreciate the question. And we'll examine and talk about the next area we want to go to. And they try to do it, like I said, based on the calls that they get for brown. So they got a little scientific. It's not just what they feel in the gut.
With our new work orders, what's not new anymore, our work order system, we're able to map, and we we map all the, we map leaks that we fix, and we also map dirty water complaints. And we try to concentrate on those areas.
Yep. It's, it's expensive when you, but this is certainly a project, worthy project. All right, any public comments or questions about this agenda item? Seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries as well. Next item is Resolution Number Fifteen of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilman PT.
Thank you, mayor. Resolution Number Zero One Five of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvement at the Natchitoches Regional Airport for rehab outfield drainage, Phase Five construction. I so move that Resolution Number Zero One Five be adopted.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. We skipped, I did skip number fourteen. Dude, can we do that? Can we finish this one and then go come back to fourteen? That works. That's Alex. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll stay on this one here. Sure, we've got a motion and second. Sure, I've got a motion and a second. All righty, and then we'll go back to resolution number 14, okay? Um, this is, uh, this is you, Ed, you got some comment about this?
Yeah, this is, uh, Phase 4 of a drainage project. We've been doing several projects over the years, uh, probably at least eight years now, different phases of drainage as thing, as money has become available. This one is a actual, pretty small one, it's, um, LA DOTD is paying 100% of this grants in total, including the, the construction work, the engineering, and everything that goes with it. It's about $110,000, and it is funded 100% by the LA DOTD. And, um, hopefully, we're winding down some of our drainage projects. We've done a lot over the year, and I'm, there could be one more after this one, but the bulk of the work has been done. We're just trying to finish it up.
Okay. Questions for Ed, y'all, or about this, uh, piece? Uh, public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go back now to resolution number 14 of 2023, Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 14 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion to the contract between City of Nagadish and Pulley Construction Incorporated for West Nagadish Water Main Replacement Phase 1, and that was bid number 0648. And whereas a substantial completion inspection has been in, performed by the engineer and a representative of the City of Nagadish, and they find the project to be complete. So I move to adopt resolution number 14 of 2023.
Second.
Motion, motion been made and seconded to, um, on this resolution, um, what is this? Certificate of Substantial Completion, just what we do at the end of major projects, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're doing it, we're doing it here. Um, comments or questions, counsel? Matt, is there anything else to add? I know you just spoke on the one previous to that.
No, this is just saying that the project is complete, and the water lines are being used for what they were intended.
And again, just to reiterate, as he said, again, Matt thought this project went really well. Um, he was very pleased with the way the project went, so that's progress, all right? Uh, public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, last item on the agenda is resolution number 17 of 2023, and Councilwoman Nelson, we got you doing a back-to-back because of my mistake. It's on you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 17 of 2023, a resolution authorizing Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Office of Community Development for 2021, 2022 Community Water Enrichment Fund Grant Application for improvements to the Nagadish Water System. And as the City of Nagadish has been awarded, a community water enrichment grant of $50,000 to construct 2,550 feet of water mains and reconnect to existing meter assemblies along Francis and Chester Streets. And I move that we adopt resolution number 17 of 2023.
Second.
2,500 feet of water mains, all right, $50,000 C-WEF grant. We, uh, we appreciate them of all sizes. Matt, is there anything you can say about that?
Yeah, this is, we use these C-WEF grants every year to, on smaller projects, um, usually out in the district, because there's a lot of dead ends out there, the water lines that just go down to a dead-end street and stop. So we're going to replace, uh, get rid of some old galvanized, uh, water lines that are on Francis and, uh, Chester Lane off of Highway 6.
And then we can start about the whole city, right?
Mayor?
Everywhere.
Then we can start everywhere.
Yes.
Replace it.
Yes.
Well, that's what he was saying, they have a, they've had a strategic plan to, that's the 700, is this the same 700? Not the same, but, you know, the same type of project that you said, a 700,000 a year typically?
Yeah, this is much smaller project. That 50,000 will probably pay for about half of it, so we'll have to match it with another 50,000.
Okay, all righty. Comments or questions, counsel? All right, public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, next item, as we said a couple times in this meeting, is on the 27th of this month, just two weeks from now. We always encourage you to download the Go Nagadish app and regroup Go Nagadish for events, so you end up knowing about things going on in the city. Regroup, we use that to send out, uh, road closures, emergencies, and, you know, of course, we don't know when those things are, some, sometimes, especially natural disasters and, um, things like that, weather events, we don't always know. Uh, the Crew of Waggons is going to be this Saturday, starting at 3:00 PM. Uh, where's this route? Does it begin at Bank of Montgomery, is that correct, uh, Randy?
They start at Bank of Montgomery, where they make up the parade, and we simply go down the length of Front Street to the South Ramp, turn down the riverbank to the stage where they, uh, give awards and complete.
All right, so that's at 3:00 PM, and, um, I think that's a cool little event. We weren't able to do either one of these last year because of weather. Got the crew of Dionysus, who is, um, they're having that parade. This is the 25th, it looks like.
18th.
It says 18th, what is that, 25 up there?
It's supposed to be 18th.
Oh, okay. Well, hey, they got a, what, whichever, 18 or 25, they got a lot of years that they've been doing it.
It's on the 18th.
Oh, yeah, only 18, yeah. It's only 18, but it's 25 years, I see what you're saying. So this Saturday on 18th, as well as the, uh, Crew of Waggons. Now, we know there's been a change in the route because of the work, uh, done on Jefferson Street. So it'll start at River South Commons, come down South Drive, hit that left on Kaiser. When you get to the bridge, uh, that's when you're gonna make a left. Typically, we make a right off of Kaiser Bridge, we're gonna make a left, uh, then get to University Parkway, go down Second Street, right, right there, go all the way down to Texas, right? Going all the way down to Texas. Come, come right on Washington, down Front Street, and then Tulane is where it's going to end. Yep, that's how it's gonna go. All right, so, um, excited, this is a parade everybody looks forward to. African-American Genealogy Series is, uh, going on, uh, they look like they had the fourth already. Next thing is on the 16th, all right, uh, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Where? Nagadish Parish Library, okay. Third floor meeting room. There's gonna be the Antebellum, uh, before the Civil War, uh, that Antebellum period, okay? So, um, it's like J.L. Gordon, that's how you say it. All right, gonna be the presenter. All right, you got something else up there, Steve? Okay, and this is African-American Experience on the Kane River Plantations. It's gonna be Saturday, the 18th, this coming Saturday, at 2:00 PM at the Louisiana Hall of Fame. So that's going on, on Saturday, all right? So we got several things taking place Saturday. And then our Bike Sunday, we're doing the third Sunday of each month at 2:30 PM. We start from the same place, we, we, we start and end at the same place, so hopefully more people will join us for the bike ride on this coming Sunday, asking that you wear your helmets for your safety. But these are always fun and, um, uh, really, really good events. All right, and I think there's just one other thing. Of course, we know with Mr. Johnny Barnes, there's an event, uh, on Wednesday at the Recreation Center, starting at 5:30, to honor, um, some African-Americans here. Mr. Ronnie Evans, Dr. R. Harris, uh, Pastor Steve Harris, Mrs. Linda Queen, Mrs. Eleanor Robertson, and Ms. Sonia Steele, uh, acknowledging those individuals. And Sun, Monday, it's President's Day, so we're, City Hall's gonna be closed along with city offices on Monday, all right? Any other announcements? Have you got something, Kevin?
Uh, get back into the tournament season out at Park Nagadish this weekend. Uh, right now, we're right at the tournament, looking at like 40 teams coming into town. So you add that to all the other stuff that's going on, you're gonna have a lot of folks in town this weekend.
Okay. Are there flyers for these events when we have the park? Because if so, we make sure, get Blake to send those to Aziz, and we'll get him on the app. I know it's fluid a lot of times with these tournaments.
It, we don't get a lot of, we get last-minute information, like on Tuesday or Wednesday, that's when we get it to Aziza. Uh, as soon as we get it in our hands, we relay it to you guys, and.
It does take us 24 hours to get it on the app, but as soon as you get it, get it to us so we can get it there, okay? All right, um, at this time, counsel, we're here, motion to adjourn.
May I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Uh.
All right, may we adjourn? See you, folks.